Thank you.
Yes.
Were we going to move your stuff to after public comment? Since you're not gonna do roads and blanchers?
His struggles are real.
They're good. Good morning, everyone. We're gonna start in a few seconds. I'm only staring directly at you guys for a reason. Good morning.
I was distracted.
Indeed, you were. All right. It's 9:00 a.m. on October 7th, and we call to order this regular business meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. So with that, please rise for the invocation.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to pause, give you praise, and seek your blessing and guidance over this meeting. We ask that you would be present in every detail and that all that is done here would bring glory to your name. We lift each agenda item before you and pray that the commissioners would see with wisdom and perspective that only you can provide. Lord, may the commissioners hear your voice clearly, follow your direction, and have discernment in every decision. Let the spirit of this meeting be one of unity and cooperation as together we seek your will for our county. We also lift up the families of the commissioners, asking for your blessing, health, and comfort in difficult times. Meet them with your kindness and surround them with your care. And Lord, we pray for those gathered here today. You know every circumstance and every need. Make your presence real to each one and let them experience your love in a personal way. We thank you that you hear us, that you draw near, and that you are faithful. We exalt you, Lord, placing you first in our hearts and minds. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Do we have a motion to adopt the order of agenda?
Based on the information before us, I move to amend the order of agenda by removing B O C C item number one regarding the sheriff at will policy.
Second the motion.
Any public comment? On this item specifically? Seeing none, any board deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion is approved. Do you now like to make an motion to adopt the amended agenda?
I move to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, any more deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion is approved. Order of agenda has been adopted. Regarding the consent agenda, we do have items that are over $5,000. Two of those items are confidential. For the prosecutor's office, we have a subscription service for software in the amount of $18,594. And for technology, we have server data center and software assurance in the amount of $39,059.92. Would you like to motion for the consent?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, any more deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion is approved. And with that, we'll turn it over to the clerk.
Good morning, commissioners. Morning, everybody. For you, I have two different claims batches. One for last year, fiscal year '25, batch number 52, totaling $1,572,392. The monster shares of this is, of course, due to Jason Topp. He's got asphalt mix at $1.134 million. His grand total is $1.234 million. There's also another large chunk with the assessor, $230,000. That's for the aerial photography contract for last year. And that basically sums up the batch.
Does the board have any questions?
Nope.
I don't have any questions.
Do you want to make the motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of FY '25 claims batch number 52, totaling $1,572,392.
Second.
Do we have any public comments on this agenda item? More deliberation? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, I have fiscal year '26, the one we're currently in, claims batch number one, totaling $825,198.65. Of these, we have a technology software of $70,000. Our liability insurance for $662,000. And we have computers from the Justice Center, from the Justice Fund, $78,000.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of the FY '26 claims in batch number one, totaling $825,198.65.
I second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? More deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
Motion is approved. Thank you, clerk. We're now on to airport. Mr. Shook, do we have you online?
You do. Thank you, commissioners. I have before you the notice to proceed for the obstruction removal project at Sandpoint Airport. This project is funded by an FAA AIP grant approved by this board earlier this year. It removed trees at both ends of the runway at the airport and is scheduled to be completed no later than December 1, 2025. I recommend issuing this notice.
Okay, do we have any board questions?
I don't have any questions.
Nope.
Entertaining motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to issue this notice to proceed, and the chair sign administratively.
I second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, more deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Shook. Director, since we have a number of items to go over, would you like to present them?
I'm all right. I'm standing here already, so we'll just go for it. Good morning, commissioners. Jason Topp, Director of Road and Bridge for the record. So I got four items for you guys to look at today. The first one I have is to add unanticipated funds to our official '26 budget line, 0028490, plant asphalt mix, and 0028551 bridge repairs. So Idaho Code 31-1605 provides that the Borden County Commissioners may adjust the budget as adopted, provided there shall be no increase in anticipated property taxes. With that being said, Bonner County Road and Bridge received in our fourth quarter payment an unanticipated revenue from 0024680 state revenue, which is where we throw those lines that are unanticipated. It's just one that I created in the account to go over there. And that was for the sum of $2,546,970.54. These funds came from the excess tax revenue from the state and the state's general fund that was distributed throughout the local jurisdictions by a percentage depending on population and mileage. So these funds are intended for road maintenance as outlined by the state. Whereas the projects have been started in fiscal '25 and will be completed in fiscal '26, we're proposing to increase the county road and bridge line, 0028490 plant asphalt mix to complete the remaining 5.7 miles of Clagstone Road that was approved on September 8, 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners. An increase to line item 0028551 bridge repairs by $1,128,283.48 for the replacement of the Coca-Cola brand. These funds will fund the completion of both projects in fiscal '26. The Bonner County Road and Bridge requests the Commissioners authorize the clerk to open the budget and add these unanticipated revenues as outlined in the resolution.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Motion, please.
Move to approve resolution number to be assigned, authorizing the clerk to open the road and bridge FY '2026 budget and add unanticipated revenues to the Bonner County Road and Bridge B budget for the sum of $2,546,970.54 as detailed in the resolution.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on this item? More deliberation? Think it'll be great to see this project come to fruition. Understand the difficulty of having to bridge two fiscal years, but seeing it get done will be valuable, so.
Yeah, it'll be nice to get that one completed. It's now got a three-ton weight limit on it, so it's making it difficult even for our plow operations.
Roll call vote, please. Yes.
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 Motion passes. Item two, please.
All right, so the second one is carrying forward funds from our fiscal '25 budget to our fiscal '26. So Idaho Code, I just read it, 311605, provides that the County Commissioners may adjust the budget as adopted, provided there shall be no increase to anticipated property taxes. On August 19, 2025, Bonner County Commissioners awarded the East Shore Guard Rail Project to Igel Fintan Incorporated LLC to complete the first phase of the project of the East Shore Road, which includes 5,512.5 feet of guard rail for the sum of $249,866. This project has been started and will not be finished until probably closer to end of November out there, so we need to carry these funds forward. So whereas this project has been started and will be completed in fiscal '26, Road and Bridge is requesting the Commissioners authorize the clerk to open the budget and carry forward these funds as described in the attached resolution.
Does the board have any questions? Hearing none. Entertaining motion, please.
I move to approve resolution number to be assigned, authorizing the clerk to open the road and bridge FY '2025 budget and carry forward funds allocated to the East Shore Guard Rail Project and increase the Bonner County Road and Bridges B budget for the sum of $249,866 as detailed in the resolution.
I second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, more deliberation?
I just want to make sure that when it's completed, that we measure that and make sure we get that extra half a foot.
Yeah. We'll definitely make sure we.
Okay, don't get shortchanged here.
It's pretty expensive.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Item three.
All right, the third item I have is carrying forward funds again. Same code applies. Do you want me to read it every time? I can if you'd like.
I think we're thoroughly.
Okay. On January 11, 2022, Commissioners approved the application for the Spirit Lake Curve project. On January 10, 2023, they approved a state and local agreement for the project that obligated an amount of $677,100 to be contributed to this project that would be needed to be budgeted for in fiscal '25. Though the project is up and going, only a portion of these funds were expended, leaving $617,354.98 that will need to be carried forward to fiscal '28 for the final payout. These funds are in fiscal '25 0029000 grant match. Whereas this project is started and will need to be carried forward, Road and Bridge is requesting that the Commissioners authorize the clerk to open the budget and add $617,354.98 to the fiscal '26 grant line of 0029000 as outlined in the resolution.
Any board questions?
Nope.
Entertaining motion?
I move to approve resolution number to be assigned, authorizing the clerk to open the road and bridge FY '2026 budget and carry forward fiscal '25 funds totaling $617,354.98 to the Bonner County Road and Bridges B budget as detailed in the resolution.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? More deliberation? None. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Item four, please.
Yeah, this one looks a little different to right. So we're gonna continue it from fiscal '25 to 2026, and it's the interest on road and bridge fund balance resolution that we just did. So on July 15, 2025, per the resolution 25-43, Commissioners approve the interest from the road and bridge fund balance allocated each month to the road and bridge fund line 0024710, interest on investments from the county's general fund or future road and bridge projects. This interest will be calculated each month for the future projects based off of the road and bridge fund balance, so whatever's in there each month they'll look at to see what we're gonna get on that, and then place in the 0024710 interest on investments until such time the future resolution is brought forth to reallocate these funds. Revenue generated from fiscal '25 shall be carried forward to fiscal '26 line 0024710 and shall continue to accrue interest that shall be used for a future road and bridge project as intended. We see the attached resolution. There might be some questions on this as to why we started that, and a whole portion of this is because of the East River Loop Bridge project that we have going on, where we're trying to save for that project. We know it's gonna cost us a million bucks, so we're gonna be using the interest that we're making off the county road and bridge fund to actually help fund this rather than shipping it out to the taxpayers for additional money.
Do we have any board questions?
I just wanna add a little bit to that comment. It's also a point, kind of a recognition of how do we get projects moving along faster by utilizing the money that's in road and bridge budgets availability? And in looking at the idea of having different accounts set up, one of the options was taking a look at the approximate fluctuating amount, but at the time we looked at it was about $20,000 a month that wasn't being put back into the road and bridge budget for projects. So, and the reason I wanna make sure that I make that comment is once that particular bridge that he mentioned is done, we're probably still going to be looking at doing this to help move road and bridge projects along as a little bit faster, because every little bit helps. And so that was one of the things that was identified as helping move that department. And you're gonna see the same similar in those departments that we're allowed to do that in. So that's part of what that kind of audit finding was.
I'll piggyback on that. I agree. And I think the value of it is otherwise, any interest earned simply goes into the general fund. And we've already made the decision as a county to fund a project. And so to not do that in as timely a manner as possible means it just costs more the longer it gets delayed to start. So the sooner we can begin the project and invest that funding to get the project complete, the less it should cost in the end. So I do think it's a really good approach.
Entertaining motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution number to be assigned that authorizes the clerk's office to open the road and bridge fiscal '2026 budget to carry forward accrued interest from fiscal '2025 and add fiscal '26 accrued interest each month based off of the current month-to-month road and bridge fund balance to revenue line 002-4710 beginning October 1, 2025 for future road and bridge projects.
I second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, more deliberation?
None.
Roll call vote, please. Yes.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, director. B O C C item one was taken off the agenda. So we're on to B O C C item two regarding the holiday schedule.
You'd like me to read the memo?
If you would, please.
So, action discussion decision regarding county holiday schedule to include whether or not the county takes the day after Thanksgiving off by way of moving the holiday in June to the day after Thanksgiving. We have a couple of options, which I don't know if we're actually limited to these, but I will read them off. Option number one, to replace the following holiday with the Friday following Thanksgiving. Option number two, keep the Bonner County holiday schedule as is. Option number three, allow individual departments to decide if they will open the Friday following Thanksgiving for their employees taking PTO for that day. If an employee does not wish to use their PTO, they would need to work that day. Departments who choose to close must give notice in the paper at least two weeks prior.
Thank you.
Well, if you would like, I've got a statement on that. Please. So our staff sent a poll out to the employees of Bonner County. We had 203 responses on what the employees would like, on their opinions. Out of the 203, 184 were directly answering the question, would they rather have the day after Thanksgiving off or Juneteenth off? And the numbers came back with 144 of the employees saying that they would want the day after Thanksgiving off, which is 78% of the employees. Forty employees responded saying they'd rather have, keep the Juneteenth off, which is 22% of employees.
And less than 50% of our employees responded to the survey?
Yep. Which means they must not care, right? If you don't respond.
Not necessarily. We have to give a disclaimer for not everybody gets an email to be able to respond to that. And so when I requested that staff send out a survey, it's, the survey went to those that had email capability for that. And so the reason I asked this to go on the agenda is as we approached another holiday last season, some departments fully closed. It's not a day that the county takes off, and so it's a reasonable expectation from community members that the county building be open. But then it created an issue of do individual departments completely closing means that being open is not, you're not really open if one whole department is closed? And so this was a way of trying to plan for kind of the, what does public service, public-facing business look like while taking into consideration some of the thoughts and ideas from staff members about what the holiday schedule could look like? There was a lot of, one of the things that I mentioned in the meeting yesterday was for people in the courts, they don't have the option to ever take off the Thursday and the Friday, and so they will always have to be here on the Friday because of the rules. And so even though one person gives their comment, it's representative of that whole group of staff over there that needs to maintain being open. Skeleton crews obviously can be run, but they don't get the day off. Some people gave verbal feedback to me saying that they understand people's desire to want two days off in a row, but some people liked the idea of in a month where you have no holiday to have a day off, especially when you consider November, December, we have a lot of days off. There was a comment from the Weeds Director regarding exchanging the day that was considered floating Christmas Eve for after, since the day in June is a technical federal holiday versus the day of Christmas Eve is not. It was just more of a floating one. And so that was some of the feedback given before the, as I was looking at, how do you make sure that we plan? Because what, it should be as uniform across the organization so that the public can know what to depend on from the county building without some issues of how many people are actually in the building if the building is technically open, but what does a true skeleton crew look like and those sorts of things? Because there isn't a policy within HR that addresses this issue. So that's what happened. The survey is, there is a disclaimer for the survey because it is limiting not just that people didn't respond, not everybody can actually respond. It was to try to give an idea of what people liked, some people felt like. Other comments were using your PTO for the Thursday for your shopping holiday-ish, whatever we call that day. So that's kind of the feedback on the holiday schedule. Some people did mention removing Columbus Day. That's not realistic, that it's coming up too soon. I don't think that was a realistic exchange of a holiday for this fiscal year, maybe a next fiscal year. So that was kind of a more broader of the feedback that came to the county.
I'd say, is Clarissa present?
I think she's out this week.
So I know she's said a few things in the past too regarding like Juneteenth because our property taxes are due on June 20th, and being closed the day before that deadline sometimes causes issues. So there's some things to think about, and no matter what the decision is, even if we decide to keep it the way it is, it's not going to make people happy. We need, we need to understand that, that we're not going to make everyone happy. So whatever the decision is.
Yeah, and that's, I.
And I don't have a dog in this fight, to be clear. I'm an elected official, so we don't have PTO. We can take days off, whatever day off that we want and choose. So to be clear, three of us up here really don't have a dog in the fight. I'm just trying to voice the employees' decision. That's all I'm trying to do.
And I, for me, I think it's the balance of, I agree that customer service is important for us to focus on, as well as trying to find a good equitable balance for the staff. And the not knowing what departments are going to be open when you come on a given day, I think is, is very frustrating and difficult for someone, especially if they've taken some time off of work or something to try to get business done. And it's not, I don't think it's really reasonable to expect people to try to figure out whether or not in office because it's going to be unexpectedly closed and try to track that down. I mean, there's an assumption of Monday through Friday operations. So we also have the, we have a number of small departments in the county that are essentially one or two people. And so it's very challenging for those small departments to, on holidays at times, be open and provide that customer service if they're trying to take some vacation time on times that are typically in common for people to take that vacation. So based on that, I favor being specific about what the holidays are so people can plan ahead and know what to expect. And I don't, I don't see aligning with federal holidays being important to the county. I mean, it's kind of, there are a lot of federal and, call them bank holidays too that occur that, that we don't recognize, and so I don't think that it's critical that we align with, with federal holidays. So from that perspective, I would prefer to go with option one and replace the June holiday and move that to the day after Thanksgiving so that we have consistency for our customers to rely on to know when the offices are open and closed, and then for the, the staff to be able to plan for. I know again that there's going to be some staff, we're always going to run into an issue, whether it's a unique situation, I recognize what court said, I recognize we have the issue with small departments. There's always going to be some outliers, and we're going to have to, you know, deal with exceptions with those outliers. But I think in general, courts are unique to me because that's, that type of customer service is being dictated by others versus people who show up to the office building and they're just looking to be able to conduct business. That's a different type of service from my perspective. So I appreciate the fact that they, they are not able to be as flexible, and I'm sorry for that, but I think we have to look at that differently.
Oh, David, then the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Their work schedule is their work schedule. If it falls on a holiday, so be it.
And we know like road and bridge, for example, Christmas for them, you know, when it comes to plowing, things of that nature.
Right.
That's a unique animal as well.
Yeah, yeah. Call map, of course.
Well, then we're going to need you to use the microphone. All right. So does anybody want to make a motion?
Can I make a comment before you? So for me, I think that I weigh on kind of the public interface with the county building. And so one of the things that does happen in private sector oftentimes is the public gets the Friday off. And so when, it was one of those things of are we closing when they have an opportunity to not work and come to us for service? And that's where I'm going to be looking kind of to, kind of public input on that aspect of it, because that's one of the things where people have been frustrated when they come to the building and departments have closed early when they are, when we're getting in that holiday season. It's their day to get their business done that they otherwise couldn't get their business done. And then that's, I'm not, I'm not concerned about whether or not it aligns with a federal holiday, but I also see an argument of people wanting a break in June. I don't know, it's hard to know off of just a survey, but my, my primary focus is really, does the public feel that they are served or dis-served by having that Friday, having the county building being closed when it's not a holiday, when it in a way allows for the public to get their business done? And that's in part what happens with the treasurer's comment was, she was open last year, day after, because I was in the building with them because that issue came up, because as we approach paying your taxes, they stay open to be available to collect that day. And so it's, and I, I can't recall, I saw her today, and I'm not sure if she was coming in or not, and I can't recall it, it was, it was going to be an all or nothinging, it would be a public shift, but they do get people that come in to this building on that day for that reason. And that was one of the things that came forward last year was it's a day open and a lot of people don't have to take their day off for those who wait to the last minute to pay, or they want to do it without putting it in the mail. And that's a service, kind of the, the customer service-driven aspect of the treasurer's office during that time that she brought forward. So that's, that's kind of my concern is I don't want, in terms of staffing, staff members, if it's between the public or the staff, staff can adjust and take a PTO day for a day off if overwhelmingly the public needs to access the building on that day. To me that, for me, that's the driving factor of which day is off or not, or not. So that's what I'm looking to hear from the public. So.
For me, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Donkey for a few reasons. One is stated, Juneteenth is literally the day before your taxes are due. And if we're going to try and make an argument for being open on the day after Thanksgiving to pay taxes, which is three to four weeks before the December tax rolls due, I have a hard time understanding that argument. While we are a public service entity, we are here for the public, we work for the public, but we are also the bosses of over 400 employees. And I think that the majority of our employees and the majority of the public and the citizens of Bonner County, when it comes to Thanksgiving, that's always usually just recognized as a four-day holiday. People have family coming into town, or we're leaving town to go spend the four days with our family. It's probably one of the most well-traveled weekends of the year. So that being said, I would support replacing the day after Thanksgiving with Juneteenth as well. And the argument as far as people can take PTO if they want to take off for Black Friday and go do shopping or go spend the four-day weekend with their family, they can do the same thing in June or July or any other day. They can take a day off and use that same PTO on the day that they choose instead of on a certain day that they may not. Juneteenth changes every year. It could end up being on a Sunday or Saturday or a Wednesday, whereas the day after Thanksgiving is always on a Friday, always giving you that four-day weekend. And that's, that's my one and a half cents worth.
I want to clarify something. Taxes, your taxes are actually due the, you get a second opportunity to pay your second half in June.
Correct.
And so she's addressing in her comment the first tranche of taxes. That's what she's talking about. And so it's her heavier trafficked time because of that, and that's why her comment was about the day after Thanksgiving.
Sure.
And so that's, so I'm regurgitating what we talked about the last time that this came through of the service industry. And so my position is public-facing business. That's, I'm just making an argument that that, for me, is more of a priority, recognizing that 100 people responded to a survey, we have over 400 employees. So I don't want to say that the majority of the community of Bonner County employees responded to a survey when that isn't the case. That's not even 50% of the population. So how much do you say that weighs into shifting yes or no? I am not, I'm not a person who says it's a guaranteed four-day because not everybody's worked in industries and a lot of our service, services within the county in the admin building, I think it's reasonable that people expect to have those days off, but a lot of people in different departments, they're not taking time off. Maintenance is going to still have to be available if the building is open. They're not always getting days off. So I'm just saying, I, for me, my vote is more heavy towards public facing, what does that look like? And that doesn't mean that it's not a four-day. It means what does that mean? And one of the drivers for me has been the comment that the treasurer made about their tax collection is important because it's people coming to the building to get work done on that day that they have off in private sector. That was something that was resonating at the last discussion. And that, that's my concern is I don't want to cut off a day that people don't have to take off early from their job to come to do business for a day that is not a day that is a usual and typical day off. That's all. And I don't know the public input on that when you look at the available options. So that's, so I just wanted to clarify on why there's two tax, tax dumps for the treasurer.
Right. The first one being December 20th, which again is three to four weeks after, the day after Thanksgiving. And I would like to reiterate too, although yes, it is a fact that only about half of the employees responded, the half that did respond, 80%, so that's four fifths of the employees that responded would like to have the day after Thanksgiving off. So even though half did not respond, I think it would be fair to say that that trend would continue on the other half, maybe not the same, but I would have a hard time understanding that it would drop down to even a 50/50 split. So to address that, that issue. Maybe some of them didn't read their emails, I don't know.
Any further discussion before a motion might be placed?
No.
I make a motion. I make the motion that we replace the following holiday, which is Juneteenth is what we're discussing, with the Friday following Thanksgiving.
Do we have a second?
I'm going to ask for some clar, I think there needs to be some clarification with your motion because we would have, I think we have to address, can you add in a disclaimer of you'll address for those that can't take that as a holiday, what you would, how you proceed with that? Because not everybody can do that.
So I think that would go without saying because I don't think everybody can take Juneteenth off, off either. So however that is being navigated would still remain the same, in my opinion, unless there's.
It's not the same. So courts cannot take it, so other departments that work a holiday, so if you strike Juneteenth from a holiday period, then you're saying that there would be no holiday pay for time and a half, and you'd be shifting your, taking the day after. But there are people that cannot take it as a day off, so are you, would you want them to be able to use, for example, clerks a, like a floating holiday or just say to work with, to determine what to do with staff that don't get the day off? Because in, in part, holidays are to help people get a day off. So in a department where they don't have the option, would you allow that to be floating for them or to work? What's your suggestion for that?
I do think that most employees do appreciate a floating holiday. What's your opinion on that?
There's a problem with the HR with respect to floating holiday, as was brought up the last time we discussed this for the organization, unless you pick, if you pin it to something, because then they had to do tracking of when you pinned it in. And that was why when they had the other discussion on holiday, it was identified that Christmas Eve was going to be the holiday that way. It wasn't floating and it was just there. So if you create a floating holiday, you're creating something for HR. So my suggestion would be if the majority of the board wants to say that day would be the day off after, that you identify it and then say that we'll work out the logistics of that after so that it's clear that that process isn't done, because I think there needs to be a conversation with HR on what that actually. on what that actually looks like to ensure equitableness of people that cannot shift with how you're going to address the constraints of shifting holidays in the system. That would be my recommendation. That you add that aspect in so that you get HR's, what's the best way to implement a shift, knowing the different constraints? Because you'll, there's some other things that come into play with that.
So since we have the Director of HR here, can we ask him that question right now?
Good morning, Commissioners Jonathan Holmgren, Director of Human Resources. It'd be a very simple way to account for floating holidays. I would recommend to the Board that the authority for decision making about floating holiday usage would be delegated to elected officials and department heads. And they could very easily create a memo for record stating their decision for where to place that floating holiday and submit it to HR for record keeping. And then when we process the payroll for the individuals, well, when we work with payroll to account for that, we'd have something on record where it'd be easier to pin down the date for the specific individual. So I think that's a very simple way forward. We just delegate the authority to choose the floating holiday and where it goes to department heads and elected officials. I would also recommend that the Board authorize how many floating holidays there are so it doesn't get wildly out of control. So if there's only going to be one during calendar year, there probably should be a resolution that specifies that. And that would be my input, pending any questions.
So how would you account for, if you shift to the whole organization taking the day as a floating holiday, everybody isn't also getting a floating holiday? So you, that's where I'm saying that there needs to be some crafting of that aspect. Because not everyone would get a floating holiday if the county building is closed on that Thursday.
I'm not understanding what you're saying. Would you mind clarifying that? Because I don't see how everybody wouldn't get a floating holiday if it was up to elected officials and department heads of where to place that in the calendar.
So the question here is whether or not just to take the Friday after Thanksgiving as a holiday. So if the Board votes to do that, then everybody gets a holiday. But not everybody can take the Friday after Thanksgiving off. And so if the solution is that those persons would receive a floating holiday, it's not being applied across the Board. And so there's some accounting for who gets that versus who doesn't get that.
Right.
And so that's where I'm saying a conversation with, which might not be in this meeting, I'm saying a disclaimer that addresses that you would have to identify who doesn't get to do that, which is going to be all of courts, for example. They're not going to get to do that. And what does that setup look like between HR and payroll? Because they have, you guys have a need to communicate what that process looks like for them for tracking. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you for clarifying. And again, I think it's pretty simple and straightforward. The total number of authorized holidays should be stated and specified by the Board. And if there's offices or departments that can't by statutory requirement take those holidays, then authority would be given to that officer or department head to move that holiday to a different date of their choosing. And then they would just coordinate with HR and payroll for tracking it. And I do not think that would make additional busy or administrative work outside of the normal scope of our duties or responsibilities of our jobs.
So I think there's just enough nuance and semantics here that, as much as I hate to delay things, that I think we might be better off if we were to, say, schedule a workshop next week to better understand the implications of making a change. I just hate to make a change and not understand what the domino effect might be. And then if we need to prepare a resolution, we can have a resolution prepared for the following business meeting.
I disagree with you, Commissioner Donkey. I think this is a fairly simple decision. I don't think it's going to require a workshop. Question was brought up about how it would work with HR. The Director explained that it would be a fairly simple situation. I say let him do his job. And as time is approaching, you are six weeks out or whatever from Thanksgiving. I think this is something that we've kicked down the road for a year before you were sworn in.
Just grab the microphone.
I just think that we need to take an action and make a decision and move forward and let HR do their job as far as whatever they have to do to make that floating holiday work. We continue to the next issue. That's my, that's my opinion.
So my position on it is if the decision from the Board is that the majority want to make the shift to the day after, that it's reasonable to give the public and the employees as much notice that that's the change you want to make. But I don't agree that it is as simple as a change as is being stated because we addressed that before with some constraints. That, that aspect of it, there is enough time to get addressed. I don't think you need a workshop to address it. I think there needs to be a dialogue between the Department of HR and of payroll with clear direction from the Board of which departments are you going to allow there to be a floating holiday? Because one of the things you can end up with is people that just say, well, I don't care about it. I don't want that day. I just want it to be floating. Because if your option is floating versus the day after, that's a completely different survey. So is it that this is the holiday day and the only exception are going to be those departments that cannot take that day? Or departments impacted by the season, which is always a road and bridge and maintenance? And then you give instructions to HR and payroll and the identified departments of what needs to happen to make sure that those people get a day off and that it's accounted for? Waiting too close ends up with one, one of the things I didn't, I didn't like, I don't want to pay to notice the, something in the newspaper over who's open and who's not open. I think that's a waste of our tax money. If you guys want to have the day off, I just want to give a qualifying statement that there is a process to a floating holiday in our system and tracking and communication between HR, the departments that are going to be able to do it, and payroll. And that should be very clearly stated because it is a process. And I think you can make your vote with that comment that that needs to occur and work that out so that everybody knows what the day after Thanksgiving is going to look like. Because there are going to be people that plan to have the day off in June and they need to know that it's not a paid day off unless they take vacation time. And there are people that say, I want my four day holiday, that want to prepare for that. And we are, so I tend to agree that I'd like to see a decision be made today with a process that allocates for the procedure to make sure it's as seamless as it can be between the respective departments and HR and payroll.
I would agree. I think the process needs to be clear. Holiday is a holiday. It's not a choice. We're not adding a floating holiday because then we would be adding more to payroll, more of a burden to the taxpayers. Not only financially, but by taking another day off. That we're not serving the public. That's why I like option one. It's pretty clear cut, or it is clear cut. It's just changing the day that we recognize or want to take off as a paid holiday. So we're going to replace Juneteenth with the day after Thanksgiving. Except for those that have to work, that are required by statute or law to work such as the courts. Those people will be allowed to have a floating holiday as per HR, their recommendations. It's not a choice whether I take that holiday off or not because then you're going to be coming to work. Assessor is going to have one person sitting in the office because they chose not to take that holiday off because they wanted a floating holiday. That's not what this is about. It's about replacing one holiday with another. Black and white, it's simple. And then those people that statutorily cannot take that day off will be compensated, if you will, with a floating holiday of their choice. But it's not up to the employee to make that choice. It's up to the elected official or that department head.
And for me, that's not inclusive of law enforcement and EMS that work on the day after Thanksgiving. That is compensated at time and a half per their policy. The question will be, as Maintenance and Jason are sitting up front, is they can't guarantee their people to take that time off. And so would the Board, that's where I'm saying, just say, people like that coming up saying, for example, my group can't guarantee that time off. So can we just all have a floating holiday in road and bridge? And then determine road and bridge, if you worked on that Thursday? Like, he just needs to say, is it a floating holiday or not a floating holiday for his group? And the same with maintenance, because they, or do you not do that? But let that conversation happen offline. And then today's conversation is just confirming the day that you choose the holiday with the expectation that there is still follow up to make sure we're addressing how that addresses the floating aspect for those that cannot take the day off.
I would suggest that conversation take place offline between the two departments and the Director of HR to work out the best solution for their department. So that would be my suggestion.
So then, based on the motions on the table right now, a second hasn't been provided. So I'm going to say that that motion's died. It sounds like there might be a new motion made that would add additional detail. Before we go to that, do we want to hear from any electeds or department heads that we have that would like to offer feedback?
When Commissioner Cornet made the motion, I just asked him, would he consider adding another sentence off of his motion to address the need to do that administrative detail?
If there's not a second, I can go ahead and do that, I believe.
Correct.
I believe we have the authority to do that. Okay, so I will make a motion, a new motion, that says we would replace the following holiday, Juneteenth, with the Friday following Thanksgiving with those that are not by statutory duty or otherwise able to take off the day after Thanksgiving, that they would be afforded a floating holiday. And we can add as per HR recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
I'll put a comment.
Teddy Lupton, Director of Public Works, for the record. My concern with facilities and custodians is if any county building is open, so the courthouse will be open the day after Thanksgiving, we don't get a day off. Because we can't guarantee that there's not going to be a restroom mess or food left in the garbage can all weekend long and we have disgruntled people coming in on Monday because the building stinks. We can't guarantee that something's not going to go haywire and break down and somebody has to come in and fix it. When on Juneteenth, everything is closed because the courthouse can also be closed because it's not four days, over three days in a row, whatever their statute is. So they're guaranteed that day off. If they're, if they have to come to work and everybody else is getting the day off, morale is going to go down. And you can say, hey, you guys have a skeleton crew going on at the courthouse. You need to dump your garbage before you leave. That's not going to happen. I can promise you that. So I think it should be optional the day after Thanksgiving. I personally love working the day after Thanksgiving because it's quiet and I can get a lot accomplished. Road and Bridge never gets a guaranteed holiday. Obviously, because the roads are the roads and Mother Nature is who it is. But if there's a county building, other than 911, they're always open, obviously. But if a county building is open, we're working.
So the only building it sounds like that would be affected with your department would be the courthouse or the clerk's, the clerk's office, right?
Yes.
Thanks.
So I'm just, that's just a food for thought. I just wanted to put my opinion out there as far as that goes. So, would you like the mic, sir? You want it or no?
He likes to save the best for last.
Denies it. You're going to give it to me.
Director Volker might want to sit down.
Yeah, sorry my legs aren't doing well today. But anyway, the whole Juneteenth thing is kind of nice for the road department. They like having it. The problem that Road and Bridge has is a few years ago, Commissioners decided to take a floating holiday and make it a permanent holiday the day after Christmas, or Christmas Eve. There has never been one time that any of my crews have ever got to use that holiday. They have to work it every single year to even have a thought of having Christmas morning off. If the roads aren't sanded, they're working it. It's got, they got to be there. And then if it's snowing, they work Christmas too. I mean, that's just the way it is. 31 years I've worked here. I've had the last, I think, six in a row now because I've moved in the department. But those crews have not. They've had to work them. So to me, I've never understood why we couldn't keep Road and Bridge's crews. If you want the office open on the day after Thanksgiving, that's not a big deal for us. Office staff can keep it the same way it is. But our crews that are actually plowing snow, to give them the option to have that floating holiday of taking Christmas Eve on Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, is really the only time they're going to ever get to use it. Otherwise, it's just an extra paid holiday to them. They don't, they don't use it. So it sounds like if you move Juneteenth to the day after Thanksgiving and you do like you guys just proposed, where I can work with HR, I can still move that to a different day. If you guys want to take it in June, they could instead of the day after Thanksgiving or the day after, or Christmas Eve or whatever.
That'd be a discussion between you.
I can still make that work after the fact. So I got all riled up for nothing, so I just want to put that out.
So why did you take the mic?
It's interesting. I noticed there was no timer running for it.
Well, you made a circle, but then it made me want to then suggest that maybe there needs to be a conversation about Road and Bridge with the Christmas Eve aspect of being a day that gets moved so that staff can have a dependable day off, even if it's a fixed one. Because I think that that's always the comment that you guys don't get, the holiday time.
I do think there's value in noting that we have some departments that are unique. And they shouldn't be penalized because of that, if we can avoid it.
They're not being penalized. I don't see they're being penalized. But Sheriff's Department's a prime example, right? They have to work. Clerks, court clerks, if they have to work, they have to work. But I think HR can do something to help remedy that for those departments that have to.
Well, I'm saying that what the Director brought up for Road and Bridge about the Christmas Eve, I think that is, I think they are being penalized by that not being a floating holiday for that department.
Do we notice in the paper that roads will not be plowed on Christmas Eve?
Director?
Good morning, Director Jonathan Holmgren for Human Resources. So first and foremost, all employees should have the same number of paid holidays. We can't treat employees differently based on what their job is unless there's a statutory requirement. And even then, we can figure out creative solutions to work with other department heads and elected officials to make sure that the freedom of maneuver and flexibility is given to all employees so there is the opportunity to have that equitable amount of paid time off per the Commission, Board of Commissioners authorization for that holiday schedule. So that is way too easy to proceed forward with figuring out a plan and a policy that makes sense to take all of that into account. Earlier, it might have sounded like there was some confusion regarding some aspects of new employee onboarding. So just to clarify, all employees do get a county email address as part of their new onboarding. So Commissioner Cornet is correct with his survey data analysis of individuals chose not to check their county issued email in responding to that survey that was sent out. And then this year, June 19th has already come and gone and has already been applied and processed as holiday pay and payroll. We can't retroactively go back and undo that because that happened in June. So for what you're proposing, that would take effect for next calendar year and it would not be able to affect this year unless you picked a holiday that hasn't occurred yet. Because the holiday pay for Juneteenth has already been applied and that's too far in the past to try to undo and wiggle around and slide forward for Thanksgiving.
That's the prior fiscal year. It's a separate, we're in a single fiscal year right now if we start this last week.
I will have to double check with payroll to see if there's a difference between calendar year and fiscal year for that, and we can figure that out.
Yeah, there has to be for the A budget, otherwise the budget doesn't work.
And I want to clarify, everybody gets an email address when they're doing benefits, but they don't stay connected to email to be able to receive surveys like that because they're in the field and not fixed. And so it's usually people in an And so it's usually people in an admin building that have access to really check something like that. But like your people that are out in solid waste, it's, you, you do your benefits and that's, that's where it comes from. I think that the fiscal year, we're talking, we're talking about this fiscal year, though, when it comes to this coming June.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So we can make that happen and take that into account that the policy for holiday pay, that reflects alignment with the fiscal year, because as it's currently disseminated and printed out, I think it's aligned with the calendar year, so that could lead to some department information. We'll double-check and make sure that it's all tailored to the fiscal year.
So the other HR clarification is, everybody does get allotted the same holidays, number of holidays. And so if you work a holiday, you get paid time and a half for that holiday. And so not every industry is everybody able to take that same day off. And so that's where you have leadership who identifies who wants to work and get time and a half versus who wants the day off. So I don't want to present to the community as if the county doesn't allow people to take times off. So when you're in EMS, or you're in the sheriff's office, or you're even in courts, when you're going to run a low schedule, you're identifying who, they, they do, leadership should say, who first wants to work, then who needs to work. But no one is denied the number of days that they're supposed to be off as a holiday time. It's whether or not they have the flexibility, depending on where they come from, and that's part of all of HR. And so healthcare has same number of holidays you're supposed to get off, but most people often don't take those days off, but they get compensated for those days through time and a half. And so I don't want it to, that the comment that, as if we're not giving the same number, everyone gets the same number. We get paid that. So you work it or you don't work it. If you do work it, there is a benefit that is for that. So I want to make sure we make that, that comment.
Yes, and all corresponding compensation policies will be aligned with whatever decision is made about the holiday, so it is a comprehensive. Would you mind clarifying about EMS? Because I thought as of 10-1, they were their own separate entity, but they keep being referred to in this conversation, and that's a little confusing. So can you clarify how at least HR is supposed to understand that as it pertains to holiday time off and holiday pay?
I was just giving you an example of industries that work holidays, but how they're compensated. And so they are their own taxing district, but there is a relationship to the county. So the example is still pertinent for time and a half versus holiday, a day off.
Okay.
They won't be directly impacted by this decision.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
There is still a connection between Human Resources and the ambulance district, though.
Yes, we're in progress with figuring that out, and we can certainly have more conversations about that later. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions for me.
Thank you.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, for the record.
Going back to days off and which days off, if one department's closed, they all should be closed, so that everybody is aware of that. It is up to everybody to be aware of when taxes are due, plan accordingly. And I understand trying to get in and taking a day off and all. Whether the department is fully staffed or whether it's a skeleton, you know, that's either department head or you and the department head, and HR should do it. June could be taken as a PDO on that day if they wish to. It would be nice to know the number of, the percentage of people that come in on Friday to pay taxes after Thanksgiving, because that would give you a real good idea as to, yeah, we have a very high percentage that comes in, or, you know, there's only two or three percent that come in to pay, you know, making that. For Road and Bridges, some of the other departments, Friday after, give the employee that opportunity to choose to work or not work. And an option other than time and a half would be to give them that option of being able to choose a day in the future that they take 30-day notice to the department head. The department head approves that day or changes it, based upon what I've had in the past. And all, and like you said, Asia, the employee gets that choice to work or not work, or at least say, I'm available to work, you know, in order to get that time and a half, you know, versus, you know, I want the day off and get paid regulars, great time. Thank you.
You have any additional public comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, further board deliberation. Okay, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
I could go either ways, but I'll, I'm fine with it. I just want to, I think it'll be an opportunity to monitor what that does to the organization and the, and the public. But I just thank you for amending to address, making sure we do a seamless transition for that process. So I want to make sure that those departments that have to work, make sure your voice is heard for those staff members, because I've, we've, that's been a constant one for the county.
Any further deliberation?
Thought we were done, roll call vote.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I got a little, I got a little lost in the conversation.
Was this in your pocket?
Motion passes. Okay, next we have the District One Commissioner update, which is me. Simply want to indicate that I wasn't able to conduct very much county business over the past week. I don't want to burden folks, just I want, I want you to understand that my lack of being able to conduct county business, it dues to my father's passing. I thank you for your prayers and understanding.
Do you want to let people give you comments?
So last week, we participated with a new type of training with the chaplain, and it was very informative and very detailed for the county. And it brought forward an opportunity for us to do more education to our community as a whole. I also got a chance after last night's Priest River meeting to talk with Priest River City Council about the Rust Training. It was addressing mental health in the community, but also addressing those who provide assistance to people in mental health. And so Bob Howard, our Director of Emergency Management, is going to look into how do we kind of expand this model? If you've participated with any of like the QPR training that has been completed, it's kind of probably something that's going to take that over. It was an opportunity to be a lot more detailed about that. Oftentimes, we do Stop the Bleed training, but we don't do for much younger kids. But this go-around on Saturday, the 11th, we're going to do it for ages from five to 12-years-old, which is quite a bit younger than what is typical. So this one is going to be done at Coeur d'Alene Fire Station Number Three from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. You do have to be accompanied by an adult, so it is not daycare. So do not drop kids off for Stop the Bleed. But I know it's a little bit of distance away from us, but given the age group that's being captured, it's worth taking that into consideration if you have kids in that age group. We find that a lot of times, you'll be surprised, kids learn a lot, and it sticks with them. So I will be present with Jennifer with Panhandle Health. I help do these training as part of the Idaho Medical Reserve Corps, and it's something that, that is a group that anybody can decide that they want to join. But it's a huge opportunity to teach your younger ones kind of the Stop the Bleed. This does not include Narcan training, because typically the Narcan training doesn't go for the Stop the Bleed. I know Jennifer's going to ask about that. They kind of choose what you can educate. And some of it has to do with the slides that we present, that they don't go that age group. One of the board got to have a, hear from the developer and have a discussion with the Priest River City Council about the Bonner Park West. There was some exchange of kind of some questions, and no decision was made. It was an opportunity to gather more information. They have a map that was there, that you can take a look at, that they're updating. A lot of their updated information is actually available online, so that is something that the board did participate with. The, one of the, I've gotten some input from community members on some issues and concerns. Some of them, first, by building location permits, people have some concerns in terms of the county's interface with fire and vice versa. West Ponduree has indicated they don't have an issue with the process. There, there are others that feel like that there is room for improvement. I did get an opportunity to speak with Chief Lindsay, or sorry, Chief Armstrong yesterday, in a good amount of detail about kind of some of the issues and concerns that he sees, and asking for what are his ideas and thoughts on this. Because in part, Bonner County doesn't have a, a building department. A lot of what we're dictating to the fire chiefs comes from Title 11, which is the county. And so I did see that he did email us. I asked that he send us a document. He emailed all three commissioners, so it's open to all to see kind of his input and his idea. And so it's hopefully something we can come to, kind of some more structure to, to address the concerns from the county, the concerns from the public. And I'll outline what I've been contacted about. One is that it's taking longer than people want it to take. Some people feel like when they have that VLP, that they want the sign-off that day. And so sometimes with some of the areas, it's not happening that day. It's a little bit longer, and it feels like, from the perspective of some members of the public, that why, why don't we just use a method that says, if it's not signed off within two weeks, then it's automatically approved? That was one of the questions that came forward. Another option was if there was a checklist that fire gave the county, and then the county, when they go out to kind of check that boundary line, actually looks at the, a checkoff from fire. So there's some suggestion, or to get rid of it altogether. So there are some suggestions that are being presented to the county, with the request that the county have a discussion with fire, and I'm going to, and not just one fire chief, but fire as a whole, to see what is the right direction, which could potentially mean asking the county to take a look at Title 11. Some prior planning and zoning commissioners have been agreeable to helping the county review that document to see what's reasonable and appropriate, and not something that feels like it's pushing a task from the county into an area that we're not funding how they do it. There are differences in, I believe it's, West Ponduree's fee is $45, and Northside is $15. How do you address kind of that in the community? So it is definitely a conversation to have. So that is one of the conversations, and I welcome everybody messaging me about it. This is not a, it's not a, it's a huge one, because people are feeling like, our, the other comment is, our, our development season is very short. And so anything that slows that down is a hardship for the person asking for it. And in part, there's the flip side of that, is speeding it up cannot be beneficial to the community as a whole. So what is the balance of doing that? And that means coming together for a conversation with the board and the people that are being asked to do that sign-off, and the public who's applying for that application, to make sure that we're doing the best for the county as a whole. So that is one area. Another area that people have reached out to me about is kind of just the overall process, and this is internal and external, of how Bonner County does our department head meeting. Some people don't find that it is beneficial and worth the time, because it's more of an update for individuals versus specifically tell me what you're doing that you need from me, and an interdepartmental kind of conversation versus individual projects. And so kind of a request for what is the point of it? Because it has migrated from kind of where are we at budgets and projects to kind of just a generic kind of a conversation, where some people feel like it's a good amount of time that pulls them away from doing work. So there's a request that we take a look at. What's the purpose and the goal, and are we achieving it? And if not, is there a better way? Someone brought forward that years ago, one of the processes was not that it was all department heads came in the room at the same time, that it was scheduled time to come before the board, kind of for that update, that didn't have everybody feeling like they kind of wasted time is, for lack of a better word of saying that. So the request that we review that process. In terms of focuses, still focused on, we're all done with kind of insurance, but working on the aspect with the ambulance district over insurance and benefits and the way in which their base salary is. We're not done working on that. We need to address overall what our relationship is, because we have a little bit of a conflict that I think is going to revert back to where we were as to what is the prosecutor's position on advice to the Board of Commissioners on generic questions that go over the ambulance district versus specifics? Because there's a potential, if we're going to shift opinions from what we originally got, that we need to address the contract that we signed. And in part, wanting to make sure that that doesn't, that it makes for a good relationship between the Board of County Commissioners and the prosecutor's office, and we're asking the right people the right questions. Also of note, we are transitioning, and Prosecutor Marshall mentioned it yesterday, Nate Adams, who is here today, and thank you for showing up, is our, he's giving counsel to the Board of Commissioners. And so if you had a project, and I think Road and Bridge saw this, where we want input on something we've already been working on, we're copying it to Nate, and if Nate feels he needs Bill Wilson's opinion, since Bill Wilson may have been on it, then Nate can say, hey, let him do that in the background. That way, we don't end up with two attorneys giving us an answer, and it causes confusion. So we're trying to create a better transition. That's also one of the things I'm working on, is how do we do kind of handoffs, not just within our prosecutor's office, but also when we're using external? So for those of you who have projects that have had legal involved with it, even if it's just, I have an opinion and I've asked Bill this before, let's use that as a department head, because other, other elected representatives are using a different attorney, but the board is using Nate. So if it's an interface with the board, and you were using them, and I'm looking at Jason, because that's oftentimes, we're connected in that way, it's, we're emailing Nate, and then Nate will, will filter that out. I do not have the legal opinion back regarding the planning question. Louis has been asked for, where's the update? It was sent out for the review on the opinion on mixed land use. It hasn't fallen off of radar. It's just not back yet. And then my last one is, November 21st is the save date. I'm, we're, I've already finished the flyer for the legislative lunch and learn for District One. That's the top five northern counties. We were, we're not going to have the top five priority items voted on until the end of October, but we're doing a save the date for all of your state representatives to come to that meeting, so that we can have an interface with. I did ask that if we have an opportunity, because the state of fire and EMS in the state is something of concern, not just for Bonner County, but the state as a whole, that if the top five priorities are not too time-consuming, if we can add Bonner County EMS and a representative from fire on that agenda to kind of discuss, now that we've identified that it's, you know, a critical function, how do we fund it? So that confirmation has So that confirmation hasn't been made, but I have Chief Lindsey available. I did send out a request to the fire chief and West Ponduree and also Chief Armstrong of what would their availability be to participate, if we can get them on the agenda. Part of my goal is the more focus we give to our area, the more services we pull our direction. I will be meeting with our policy and advocacy group regarding suicide prevention, and I'm going to give a 988 public service. Washington State is running a commercial that is making 988 confusing. And the way they've worded it is, "Parents and caregivers call for counseling." That's, it makes it sound like 988 is going away and it's not going away. So that was submitted back to our 988 because 988 is nationwide. And so they just, their Department of Health and Services made their own commercial, so it sounds like it's not suicide prevention and it's not for anybody to call. The other issue was is, our area was communicating that we thought that it was going away because of parental rights and the LGBTQ aspect of it. And so we figured out where that concern came from. Prior to the parental rights bill, Option 3 had an LGBTQ button that you could push and you got help with that. The button moved, went away because of the shift in at the state level. So it wasn't that 988 is going away, that option is no longer within 988 because of a shift of, at the state level. So 988 is still available. It's not going away, but the commercial is, I've heard the commercial four times and it is very confusing. So we're trying to see if they will change that commercial that's making us think it's going away. So that's my update. Any questions for me on what I reported out? Yes, ma'am?
Just really quick, save the date for the election order. Do you have that date?
November 21st.
Thank you.
So you have one online?
Ms. Lunsford. Oh, I didn't say anything about fair. Lunsford.
Good morning. Actually, going back to planning and Chief Armstrong, when you guys were requiring him to come to private homes for permit sign offs, was your planning department paying any fees back to him? Because, you know, they're already suffering, they're an individual taxing district, which we keep hearing over and over. And it really seems like the county had hoodwinked them into doing something that he really didn't need to be doing, nor had any jurisdiction to do over private property owners. So I was just curious if you guys were giving any of money back for his time spent doing those?
So there was a, for, specific to Chief Armstrong, I want to say it was $15. But I will equally say that after having a, quite a good conversation with them yesterday, there's some elements of what the county did. For example, the statute requiring if you're five acres or greater, that that sign off isn't needed. They weren't reading through what was he being asked to do versus not do. I know that in a different conversation, there was a discussion about City of Sandpoint kind of given a list of, this is what I'm getting, this is how you guys should organize it, this is what we should be doing. And that's where we need to have that sit down conversation of, not every single BLP goes to, for that inspection. And we need to do our due diligence to identify, what do we need? What are we asking for? And what is that compensation rate? And on the fee schedule, it's, it is part of what's difficult in their, in their, when I look at it from my view is, the $15 fee is potentially very low when you consider how much they're being asked to go through, if there's a lot. And we need to take a look at that. I think the other concern that we have is, a lot of our building is in kind of their busy time of the year and it's a personnel issue. And so your comment about kind of addressing what we're pushing that way, I'm going to change it from hoodwink to, "A better review of the process and procedure by which we're asking for BLPs to be signed off on, needs to take place to address the concern that you're bringing with, with respect to the rate."
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? All right, that'll conclude it for me. I did print out a couple of the flyers on the Stop the Bleed, if you're looking for someone below, between the 5 and 12.
Mr. District 3 Commissioner?
So this last weekend, I attended the Panhandle Preparedness Expo at the fairgrounds, which I don't know if most people understand that are maybe into prepping or being self-sufficient. But Bonner County Sandpoint is really the only preparedness expo that is held in the whole Northwest. So there's things that we always take for granted, and I think this might be one of them. People come from out of state to attend and also to be vendors. So I would try and keep that in mind if you guys are interested in being self-sufficient. Put that on your calendar for next year. It's usually the first weekend in October. Next, I also attended the Priest River City Council meeting last night and got some information. I went there more to hear about the presentation and what they wanted to do, not necessarily to deliberate or things like that. And I'm, I'm just going to say that I'm going to be probably at least one commissioner that is really going to stand strong and make sure that we are not giving away Bonner County land to other entities or to developers or to private businesses for profit. I'm concerned, especially after the Camp Bay thing that we went through, it was not with this board, but it was with a previous board. I don't think there's an appetite of the public for us to be giving away our public lands, even though under the guise that it'll still be available to use free of charge. I've seen how that works with the Sandpoint City Beach. And someday, we will all be paying to go down there and use that city beach that was paid for by city tax dollars. So that's my input on that one. Coming up, a week from today, next Tuesday on the 14th, Turning Point USA will be celebrating Charlie Kirk's birthday down at the city beach at 5:00 in the evening. I would like to recognize Andrew and Mickey Garcia for putting this on, putting it together. They're in the process of getting a Sandpoint chapter for Turning Point USA. That's a, quite a big deal and they can use volunteers and support. So feel free to reach out to me if you guys are interested in being involved with that. That concludes my report.
Next is public comment. And Mr. Loam, we have you signed up, so if you'd like to start us off?
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, please state your name and residency.
How you guys doing? My name is Matt Loam. I live at 817 Bottle Bay Road. I wanted to talk to you guys today about the noise pollution problem that we're having at Bottle Bay Road. It is the train whistle issue. Since they widened the bridge, the trains have increased by a huge amount and my neighborhood is getting rocked with train whistles. We represent a very nice suburb, the first suburb you come to when you turn down Bottle Bay Road. There are hundreds of homes there, many of which I've just spoken to, all extremely interested in silencing the horn. So with regards to train whistles, I've reached out to Brian, who kindly facilitated a meeting between a group that I formed, which is my community, we call ourselves community shareholders very creatively. Jason was at that meeting and so was Matt Mulder. And we decided that the biggest problem with quiet zones is, number one, money. They're, they're very expensive. Number two, the human resource and the bandwidth, meaning the road and bridge department, it's a huge job. The road and bridge department has a billion things on their table already and it's just hard to stand behind a quiet zone. The other problem was also a copycat issue, where if you do one, the whole corridor is going to want to do it. Over the past seven months, we have been working diligently, me and my group, we have more than 20 work hours, we've been meeting every other Sunday, to create something called the checklist, a quiet zone checklist. The problem with, with, the problem with creating quiet zones is not the engineering, this matters, it's a cement barrier, it's a couple of lights on there, it's just you're bringing up the safety rating in order to do it. It's not an engineering wonder, but it is a red tape nightmare. And what is the red tape problem is that you have the FRA, Federal Rail Associations, you have BNSF, you have Bonner County, and then you'll have a private entity such as us to coordinate all of these moving parts. We have written a checklist of how that would be managed. We've been working very carefully, to Matt, Matt Mulder's credit, we've been ping ponging on a Google document exactly how that would read. The document has changed any number of times and it's an organic document, but we both agreed that it is a wonderful time to go ahead and present it. So, and that, I will defer that to Brian because he has been our touchstone on it. But I did want to introduce the topic is, this checklist handles every one of those problems. As far as the money, my neighborhood, which is the lignite Bottle Bay, will raise the money to do it. Now, of course, we haven't started yet, I can't guarantee it and I don't know how much it costs. Everybody keeps asking me, well, how much is this going to cost? I won't answer it until we begin Phase 1. But I believe that we have the resource to raise the money. As far as the human resource goes, this is designed to make sure that the road and bridge department is virtually replaced. The county commissioners will be virtually replaced. It is going to be a community outreach where the community gets together, working with the road and bridge department, working with, but taking the lion's share of the work off of them and putting it onto a new design. It also addresses the copycat prob, the domino, in fact, everyone's going to want one. This is the formula of how it's done. My group will help other communities down the road who say, okay, we'd like to do it too. This will, this checklist will teach them how to do it. In everything that I've read, and I've read a lot, there is no formula to silence an entire corridor. There is only a formula to silence a crossing. We begin with our crossing and that will serve as the blueprint to silence the corridor. My big ask today, and thanks for giving me a few extra seconds, my big ask today is simply that we get this checklist put on the agenda where it can have, there's many tiers to this discussion, I'm happy to talk about anything about it. We would love this to be on the agenda and the agenda item would be, may we please enact Phase 1? And Phase 1 is simply prodding around, finding the right consultant engineer, finding the right people to just kick the tires and see how this thing could fly. So that's my big ask. I'm going to give this checklist to Brian, who will decide to give it to you guys or not. This was generated by my private group. One last thing, I think we have an extraordinarily talented group. These are, a lot of these people are young retirees, they live in my neighborhood. I don't think I'm super talented, but I have hustle and we have the talent to do this. And so I, I'm going to give this to Brian, who can decide to give this to you. It's an organic document, it's not, it doesn't require signatures, but it's an intelligent piece of work that would help us quiet this problem of train whistles. It's all throughout Bonner County and we're going to do it without asking you guys for money, but we do need your help. If I didn't need your help, I wouldn't be standing here right now, but I can't call BNSF and say, hey, I, I got a plan. I need you guys to do that. But we're going to take your role down to signing a few papers and just keeping your eyes and ears open. So thanks for giving me a couple of extra minutes and I'm going to give this to Brian now because he's been my touchstone. And I'll leave you. Brian, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And Mr. Loam, is this different than the one that we've been email communicating about?
No, this is the, this is the-
Okay, so that's good for clarification. So, so you know, per our last communication, it is my intent to bring it on to the board agenda for a regular business meeting for the board's consideration, once we've finished legal review and we believe that it's ready to do that. So we have had a slight delay because of the fact that we've had a transition with our legal counsel for the board and because our prior legal counsel, Mr. Wilson, was the one who had been working with Road and Bridge and reviewing this. And now we have Mr. Adams, who's just transitioned into it. He's just started looking at it and has begun conversation to clarify some items with Mr. Mulder. And so that conversation's happening right now. So once we're able to finalize those communications and as a county, we have a level of comfort with the document legally, then I can present that to the board for their consideration.
Okay, I can, I can accept that, as long as I know that the wheels are turning. And also when it does get on the agenda, it's very important for me to know which meeting that is because I've, it's very-
Right. And per our prior communication, it's my intent to make you aware when we're ready to do that.
There's a lot of nuance.
We're just not there yet.
But thank you. So then, this is, and I can take this back again because I continue to read it. And because it is a Google doc, it does, it's organic, it does shift around a little bit here and there.
Okay, great. I appreciate the passion and I just want to let you know, it's still in process, but per our last communication, I need, we need legal to sign off on it and say that they don't have any concerns before I can bring it to the board for the board's consideration.
Great, all right, well, thank you. Let's-
Do we have any additional public comment?
She said no. She went just like this.
I'll just lower it. Wayne Martin for the record, Bonner County resident. I'm glad that you're here, Jason. I would like to, to see that traffic studies are done for new developments in the county, especially if there's an increase in homes. I would pick a number of 10, but it could be 20.
Are you taking it out, Jason?
Because there is a, a function that occurs.
Like subdivision level is what you're saying?
Correct. You know, and I know striping and we're delving in a couple of different areas. Striping normally doesn't take place unless it's 45 or above. On Clyke Stone, where the hill is, and I know you know where that is, Commissioner Domke, that hill, there are many people, especially semis. I appreciate the, the barrier that has been put up along there that are crossing over the center line. And as you're going up or you're coming down, all of a sudden you find a big truck. There are small vehicles too, but that are in the middle of the road because there's no lineage, even if it was, you know, lightly striped to let people know. That would be, be great. Preparedness. CERT training for Bonner County starts October 24th, 5th and 26th, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It basically is a preparedness training for people. They do not have to become a member of CERT. It'll be at the multi-use facility on 95 near Dooford. Do need to sign up. That would be through emergency management. With fire, you were talking about the November 21st. It'd be nice if the Chief of Spirit Lake Fire is contacted, especially with all the things going on, because they do cover my part of the-
Chief England was asked.
The county.
Is there after action kind of time for some people?
But we also need to remember National Forest and the BLM, because we do have a lot of that property out here. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to offer public comment?
Since I said there-
Come ahead.
On the fair, some people have also messaged about when they're going to be doing it, doing their post-fair update to the board. They've got 90 days per statute. And so the county, Veronica is reaching back out to them to say, give us that date because people are asking about that. So that's a known one. I knew, I pushed Christine and Amy to ask it. I knew they, I've got voicemails to return, I was like, oh, they're probably calling about the fair.
Christina, your hand was up and then it just went back down. Do you have a comment?
I'm calling you back after this meeting. Do you still have a comment?
If you have a comment, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, hi, it's Christina L. Nicholas Anderson for the record. You'd mentioned the 90 days. I was at the meeting last night. Apparently due to the holidays, they're not going to be able to make your 90 days, so they're going to ask if you can meet with them in December. So just, just so you know, that's when they're looking at meeting with you.
I am aware of that and Veronica's sending them the information about the requirement for reporting.
Okay, so you probably also know that their treasurer resigned last night.
I am aware of that.
Okay, super. So they're going to be posting for a treasurer and also for a bookkeeper, two separate positions, of which their current treasurer is willing to stay on as the bookkeeper and has supplied a bid for that position.
Thank you.
The end.
Ms. Lunsford?
Hello. I was just going to kind of piggyback, I guess, on Christina. When you reach out to them, they seemed very confused at why you wanted to meet with them. I also sat in the meeting last night and I thought it was quite interesting that they had, the fair manager had no idea why- had, the fair manager had no idea why you guys would want to meet with them. Those of us sitting in the audience knew exactly the reason they should be meeting with you, but they were very confused at what you guys were expecting of them. So you might want to send them over some bullet points explaining what information you would like, so at this meeting, they could actually come prepared. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer Arnn, Segal resident. I have a few questions here. As far as the Waterways Advisory Board, are they still looking for members? Are they going to appoint somebody? I did notice that they're supposed to meet on October 20th, but I found two different times. There says 3:00 PM, and on the calendar, it says 9:00 AM. It is at 9:00. Okay, also, it just says WWAC. It's kind of, that might be something for tech to sort of improve. It was really going down through the rabbit hole trying to find that information, and I came up with pages that were, you know, 404, not found, and then also not spelled out what WWAC and who it's under exactly, parks, et cetera. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And then also, listening to his presentation, I got an idea, back to good old Camp Bay and preserving our public access. I would propose that we put on the application for road vacations and validations, a box on there that says something to the effect, does this road or right of way provide or lead to access to publicly owned waters or lands? And that should be right there on the application, just to sort of clue people in. And of course, you've heard me speak about wanting to put things in our, our comp plan and things like that, but talking to people who were on the planning commission who worked on it, they felt that they, they put several places in there that Bonner County values public access. So putting something separate in there, in the comp plan, I'm not sure if that would be necessary other than in, as long as it's emphasized in the natural resource department area of the comp plan. But at the very least, if we could put that on the application to kind of clue people in ahead of time, because in the past, as we know, there's been ways to, people purposely don't advertise that fact, so that they can slide their agendas in. So, thank you.
Thank you. John?
John, a plant. First of all, I want to give my condolences to you, Brian, and just thinking about losing a parent, I can't imagine. I've had to lose two, and, but I'm really sorry. Also, thank you for your guys' updates, and I really appreciate you guys working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comment? Online, anyone else? All right, and it's 10-